Members of the City Council and honored guests, it is my privilege to present our proposed city budget for 2015. Budgets are about investing in the future. They require making tough choices so we can invest in key priorities. Before we look forward, let us look back at the distance we have traveled. Three years ago, our city finances were broken. Our annual structural deficit was $635 million and growing. We were reeling from the Great Recession and one-off deals. Chicago had mortgaged its future just to get through the year. To keep the budget above water, we even raided the Rainy Day Fund. When we took office, many offered ideas on how we should move forward. Some suggested we slash the budget indiscriminately. Others suggested that we simply raise taxes indiscriminately. But working together, we rejected these false choices. Instead, we resolved to reform how city government does business. We began putting performance ahead of politics, which freed up our resources to invest in Chicago's future. We cut the credit cards and car leases for hundreds of city employees. We eliminated middle management and challenged sweetheart deals. We eliminated paid positions on boards, and we finally started to get our health care costs under control. These choices allowed us to start investing and saving again. In this budget, we will continue the reforms by selling city parking lots used by city employees and other vacant properties, just as the inspector general had recommended. This one change alone will save $10 million for our taxpayers. Through better management, we have saved Chicago taxpayers $470 million over the last three years. We professionalized our hiring, ridding the city of federal court oversight, known as the Shackman Decree. We ended a 45-year-old fight which cost the taxpayers more than $20 million and, most importantly, our city's reputation. We are committed to restoring the idea that public service is a privilege, not a perk. These steps were not easy, and we all know that. But huge majorities in this council joined with our administration in bringing city government into sunlight and into a new day where what you know is more important than who you know, and serving the public interest is more important than serving any particular special interest. We are making real progress, but we still have a long way to go. We cut our city's annual structural deficit in half in just the last three years, and together, we did it without raising property, sales, or gas taxes. And for the fourth year in a row, we will balance our budget and hold the line on property, sales, and gas taxes. And like our past budgets, this budget restores money to the Rainy Day Fund instead of raiding it, for a total over the last four years of $45 million. And this budget does something dramatically different than all prior budgets. It starts our journey to properly fund our pensions so our workers can have the retirement security they deserve and they have earned. For the last three years, we have talked about the dangers of our looming pension crisis. Finally, we're doing something about it. Working with our partners in organized labor, we passed reforms that will shore up the pension plan serving half of our city's workforce, making sure that both retirees and taxpayers are respected in the process. Unfortunately, due to difficult economic times and decades of deferral, we still have a lot of work to do. But by everyone giving a little, nobody has to give everything. And by not running away from our challenges but by addressing them head-on, we've made real progress and are showing real results. Today, Chicago is the number-one city for corporate relocations. Today, we are the number-one city that people are moving to. Today, we are the number-one city in America for direct foreign investment. Today, we have the number-one neighborhood library system in America. Today, we have the number-one park district in America, and most importantly, we have the number-one Little League team in America. We are changing the way Chicago works. But we will never be the city we want to be, the city we must be, until every single person in the city of Chicago, in every neighborhood of Chicago, has the opportunity to succeed. Our true measure of success is not about whether downtown is growing. It is, and that's a good thing. But it is whether every neighborhood is also thriving, and that is the essential thing. It is whether the quality of education in every school in our city is rising, whether crime in every community is falling, and whether every resident in every neighborhood has the opportunity to find a job and provide for their family. Together, we will keep working until our success touches every part of our city. In so many important ways, we have made steady progress over the past three years, breaking with past practices. But none of us will ever be satisfied as long as the benefits of our progress are not felt in every corner of our city. We are known as the city that works, but we need to make sure that our city works for everyone. The single most important investment we can make in the future of Chicago and its continued strength in the years to come is the education of our children. Three years ago, Chicago had the shortest school day and the shortest school year in the country. Forty percent of our children did not have a full day of kindergarten. Test results and attendance were stagnant, and we practically had a high school dropout for every high school graduate. Today, our students have the full school day and the full school year they deserve and are going to need for their future. As a result, a child entering kindergarten will receive two and a half more years of classroom learning time by the time they graduate from high school. Today, every child in every neighborhood receives a full day of kindergarten they deserve and their parents have been seeking for years. We set a new record graduation rate for the Chicago Public Schools, last year of nearly 70 percent. And 82 percent of the class of 2017, today's sophomores, are on track to graduate. This from the school system that Ronald Reagan Secretary of Education once called "the worst in the nation." We should invite former Secretary Bennett back to show him that real progress is possible here in the city of Chicago. I want to take a moment to thank all the principals who've shown great leadership, the teachers who motivate our students, the parents who are engaged in their school, the school board, and our CEO Barbara Bird Bennett for making this progress and these results possible. They deserve a big hand, and they deserve our continued support. We owe our children the courage to do what is best for them regardless of the politics so they can secure their education and their future. While we've made progress, we cannot be satisfied. We can, and we must, do better. If we want to continue making progress, we have to start at the earliest years of a child's life. We know that children start dropping out of college in third grade. So we have to teach them early and make sure they arrive in kindergarten ready to learn. As a father of three and also the son of a pediatrician, I know the importance of early childhood education. I see it firsthand. That's why year after year, we've increased our investment in early childhood education. Today, we serve 5,000 more children than we did in 2011, nearly a 12 percent increase. More importantly, starting next fall, a year from now, we will provide free pre-K to every four-year-old from a low-income family. That is universal pre-K for low-income four-year-olds here in the city of Chicago. But more importantly, our responsibility doesn't end there. Our responsibility for our children's education doesn't just begin when they're four years old, and it doesn't end when they're 17. By 2018, a short time from now, 2/3 of the jobs in Illinois will require some college or technical training post-high school. So we have to make college the expectation and no longer the exception for every student. The city of Chicago has one of the largest community college systems in the country. But for too long, it had one of the lowest graduation rates, even the single digits, in the country. So for the past three years, we've been hard at work to transform our city colleges into a ticket into the middle class. Under the dynamic leadership of Chancellor Hyman and the city college board, our seven city colleges are turning from a place to get a remedial education into a pathway for success for our students. The graduation rate at our city colleges has doubled since the transformation began, and by 2018, it will triple. The College-to-Career Program aligned each city college with an industry sector that is growing and creating thousands of jobs. By partnering with local businesses, we created a pipeline from the city colleges to the jobs of today and the careers of tomorrow. Thousands of students have benefited from these partnerships, but thousands of qualified Chicago Public students cannot take advantage of the opportunity because their families cannot afford it. To make sure that these young people have the chance to succeed, we are launching the Chicago Star Scholarship. We will guarantee that every qualified Chicago Public School student who graduates with a 3.0 or better can attend our community colleges for free. Right now, as we sit in this chamber, there are 2,000 students who graduate Chicago Public Schools with a 3.0 or better but do not go to college because they can't afford it or they take on too much debt while pursuing their degrees. So with this new scholarship, we are telling our students, "You can go to college. You can afford it." Truth is, you can't afford not to go. No more debt, no more barriers standing in your way. Karen Sierra is a great example. She's with us today. She graduated from Langtech High School, 2012. She's pursuing her associate's degree at Wilbur Wright College. Karen holds down two jobs right now to pay for her studies. She hopes to have a career in business. If the Star Scholarship had existed before, she would have been able to attend free of charge and not have to work two jobs to pay for school and live with her parents and have their education stretch out for years, living with her parents probably being the worst of the whole thing. There are thousands of students just like Karen. I'd like to thank Karen for being here today. It is a simple bargain. If our students keep their end of it by working hard and getting good grades, just like Karen did, we'll keep our end of the bargain by helping them earn an associate's degree and a quality education for free. We must make sure that a diploma from our city colleges carries its weight. I graduated from Sarah Lawrence and Northwestern. I got to where I am today because of the love of my parents who are with us today and the education I received. Alderman Dow, you graduated from the University of Chicago. Alderman Cardenas, you graduated from Northeastern. Alderman Brookins, Southern Illinois. Alderman O'Shea, St. Mary's, University of Minnesota. The education all of us received was key to putting us on the path to success. The reputation of our schools and the education that comes with them gave us the opportunity to get a good job and eventually to this chamber. It was our first professional calling card. We owe the same thing to the graduates of our city colleges. We owe them the confidence they can hold up their head high when they graduate, knowing that the reputation of their school and the education it provided will lead them to a good-paying career. If they graduate with a degree from Malcolm X, we want Northwestern, Rush, and Stroger Hospital competing to hire them. If they graduate with a degree from Olive Harvey, we want to see UPS and FedEx have a bidding war for them. If they graduate with a degree from Richard J. Daley, we want to see Finkel Steel, Atlas Tube, or Method offer them a good-paying job to work in manufacturing right here in the city of Chicago. We must make sure that our city colleges are a place where costs will not stop you and where education leads you to a career and a ticket to the middle class. I met a young man on the 35th Street L early in my tenure as mayor. He was on his way to Target where he was going to work. I asked him where he was coming from. He said Harold Washington. I said, "What are you studying?" And he says, "The business administration." He was doing everything we would ask: working, going to school, trying to better himself, and move on in life. We have to ask ourselves, are we living up to our responsibility to that man and to Karen? Are we giving them education, a reputation, so when they put Sarah Lawrence, Northwestern, or they put University of Chicago, or St. Mary's, and they put Harold Washington on there, they put Malcolm X on there, they put Richard J. Daley on there, they put Wright Community College, does that carry the weight that the schools we went to carried? Does it have the reputation, the opportunity to enter the middle class in a career and get on with their life so they have an opportunity? And until that happens, our job is not done because the city colleges is part of Chicago's economic plan to continue to grow the middle class in the city and to continue to strengthen the city of Chicago. The best way to balance the budget is to have a growing economy and an educated workforce, and our city colleges is part of that strategy. So we must make sure there are good jobs in Chicago for our new graduates and for every adult who wants to work. Just a short time ago, companies and families were leaving Chicago. We slid to fifth place as the most popular destination for conventions and 10th place as the most visited by international tourists here in the United States. We were losing talent and jobs to the coast when it came to fast-growing tech sector. Worst of all, our unemployment rate reached a high of 12.2 percent. Today, companies have the confidence to relocate or expand here, and people have the confidence to move back to the city of Chicago. In the last three years, around 30 companies have relocated to Chicago. We are the number-one city for corporate relocations and number-two for the fastest-growing companies in America. In fact, in each of the past three years, IBM, The Economist magazine, have done comparative study of other cities across the globe. All came to the same conclusion: Chicago is the second-most competitive city in North America and in the top 10 worldwide. That is all the more impressive when you consider that we are not the political or the financial capital like New York, Singapore, or London, who are also in the top 10. Our strength as a city comes from our people and their education. Since 2011, more than 53,000 jobs have been created in the city of Chicago. Our unemployment rate has dropped by 1/3 to 7.4 percent. That is still too high, but it marks the lowest point since the Great Recession. The number of jobs in our tech economy has grown by 20 percent, and we are now the most popular destination for meetings, conventions, and conventions, and the tourism industry just in the last three years has created another 5,200 jobs here in Chicago. It is not good enough, though, to create jobs downtown. We are focused on creating jobs, good-paying jobs, in our neighborhood as well. One of the best ways to do it is by supporting our small businesses. That is why each of our budgets has invested in making City Hall a partner to our small businesses rather than the problem. When we took office, the city of Chicago had 117 business licenses on the books, more than Los Angeles, Phoenix, Atlanta, and Philadelphia combined. We cut the red tape, reducing them by 60 percent, saving Chicago small businesses a little over $1 million a year. We established a small business center to cut time you spend waiting in line by half. We put our small business department on track to becoming the first department to go entirely paperless by 2016. That way, small business owners can focus on their customers and not on City Hall. We also created a first-of-its-kind microlending program to provide financing to small businesses. These are people who need financing that is beyond the reach of their credit cards but not enough for a bank to be interested. The program, which we worked together with our city treasurer, will now pay for itself going forward and will help around 100 small businesses grow and expand each year and hire people in our neighborhoods. It has helped business owners like Susanna Torres, who is here with us today, a dentist who travels throughout the city providing dental care to children and families who cannot afford coverage. When delays in the insurance payments threaten her ability to make payroll, she received a loan of $12,000 from our microlending program that allowed her to stay in business. She now has 10 employees working right here in the city of Chicago. Thank you, Ms. Torres, for being with us. We are also bringing more grocery stores to our neighborhoods, like the new Whole Foods that is coming to Englewood, that Alderman Thompson and the community have been asking for years, or the new Mariano's in Bronzeville. These stores create thousands, hundreds of jobs for our neighborhoods. They are vital economic anchors for our neighborhoods and our communities. They also are helping us eliminate the food deserts, so no family, no parent has to travel more than a mile to get the basics for their children of fresh fruits and vegetables and meats. The good news is that we have cut the number of low-income residents living in food deserts by 40 percent in the last three years. We have set a new standard. If you call yourself a Chicagoland store, you have to serve all of Chicago, not parts of Chicago. Just recently, when Dominix announced it was leaving Chicago, it was a body blow to our city and our neighborhoods and our workers. But thanks to our task force, the efforts of Alderman, community leaders, and department heads, 14 of the 15 Dominix stores in Chicago have been replaced with other grocery stores that are either open today or will be open soon. And we will not rest, and I know Leslie Harrison will not rest, until the residents of South Shore, the 15th Dominix location, have a grocery store in their neighborhood that Despite our progress, we will not succeed as a city until every person in every neighborhood has a chance, not just at a good job, but a good-paying job. That means we will keep pushing for a Chicago minimum wage of $13 an hour so parents who work hard will not have to raise their children in poverty. We have made a $13 minimum wage a requirement for city contractors, affecting thousands of workers. And today, the CTA Board will be following our lead by requiring their contractors to also pay $13 minimum wage. I've been proud to work on this issue throughout my entire career, when I worked for President Clinton and when I was in Congress. In fact, I helped lead the effort as a congressman to raise it in 2007, which was the last time there was a federal increase, 2007. Since then, costs for the basics have gone up. The minimum wage has stayed flat. People earning the minimum wage deserve a raise they can count on, and so do their children, because the minimum wage is not a number. The minimum wage is about a child going to school with their stomach full, not empty. That is what a minimum wage means. A minimum wage means that a parent does not have to pick between a doctor's visit or school supplies. It is not just a number. It's about the choices families, mainly single mothers, make all the time across the city of Chicago. That is what a minimum wage means. And this winter, the city of Chicago will raise the minimum wage here and will rise with the cost of living, so we will no longer allow the minimum wage to fall behind. With this budget, we are also making investments to make our neighborhoods safer. We used to have hundreds of police officers sitting behind desks doing administrative tasks, doing paperwork, instead of working in our neighborhoods as they were trained to do. And our community policing had as many people in the central office on 35th Street as it had in our districts. That did not make our streets any safer or the strength of the relationship between the police and the communities they serve. Our summer jobs program for our youth was not growing. We had not built a new domestic violence shelter in more than a decade, even though there are roughly 18,000 calls every year from Chicago to the state domestic violence hotline. So we challenged past practices and made some long-sought changes. Since we've taken office, we've moved hundreds of officers from behind the desk back to patrolling our streets. We are in the process of building the new Weems Domestic Violence Shelter in the neighborhood of Chicago Lawn that we have needed for over a decade and mothers have needed for over the last decade and had nowhere else to go. We expect to open it next year. We've put additional police officers on the most violent streets of Chicago through Operation Impact, not just behind a wheel, but on bikes, because if bike patrols are good enough for Michigan Avenue, they are good enough for all the neighborhoods of the city of Chicago. A third of the officers assigned to Operation Impact will be patrolling on bikes in all 20 of those districts, and we will start training these additional officers next week. I want to thank Natasha Hall, who lives near Englewood. She's not here with us today because she's at work. I met Natasha at the Low Playground opening back in August with Alderman Dow. She said she now has the confidence to let her oldest son take the little brother to the playground because the police officers on bikes stop there, talk to the children, and check in on them. That is what we want to see in all parts of Chicago, a stronger relationship between our police, our residents, so parents like Natasha have the confidence to let their children have the childhood they deserve. And while it is important to invest in our police, it is just as important to invest in our youth and their safety. That means giving them a safe place with a mentor who teaches them good values, whether it is in school, after school, or during the summer. In this budget, we are also expanding our after-school opportunities for our children by investing an additional $1 million in After School Matters. Maggie Daley launched After School Matters more than two decades ago. We've all seen those purple shirts and the sense of pride it gives our youth. But more importantly, we've seen the impact it has had on our city and on the lives of our children. It has kept them safe and has also helped them discover their true passion and put them on a new path. Talk to these children. Talk to their parents. Every parent who has a child in our after-school programs will tell you the difference it has made in the child's life and also the difference it's made in the parent's life because it helps them balance work and family. So with this budget, we are honoring Maggie Daley's trailblazing work by bringing the city's overall investment up 50 percent since 2011 to now serve nearly 17,000 children in After School Matters. Our responsibilities to our children do not end when the school bell rings at the end of the day or at the end of the year. It continues throughout the summer. In each of the last three budgets, we've increased the city's investment in summer jobs programs. In this budget, we will provide a record 24,000 summer jobs to our youth, a growth of 70 percent since 2011. With a change in strategy, with new partnerships between police, faith leaders, residents, and with the dedication of the men and women who serve as police officers, Chicago's murder rate and overall crime rate are down to their lowest levels since the mid-'60s. But you and I know this brings zero comfort to the family and friends of 11-year-old Shamaiah Adams, nine-year-old Antonio Smith, and our beloved special education teacher, Betty Howard, who worked at Gwendolyn Brooks College Prep. They are among the Chicagoans who lost their lives in the past year to senseless gun violence in the city of Chicago. I want to be frank. We can invest in additional police officers. We can adopt different strategies. We can partner with faith leaders. We can be innovative with after-school and summer jobs. But none of this can outrun the amount of guns on our streets. Unless we do more to get illegal guns off our streets, there are no amount of police, no amount of after-school programs, and no amount of summer jobs that will solve this challenge. We must get illegal guns off the streets of the city of Chicago. Every weekend, Chicago's police officers take more illegal guns off the streets of Chicago than either New York or LA. This summer, this council passed a strong ordinance that will help prevent gun trafficking, illegal gun sales, and gun theft in Chicago. But we know Chicago's But we know Chicago's not an island. The majority of the guns being used in crimes are coming from Indiana, Wisconsin, Downstate, and other places with weaker gun laws. If we're going to build on the progress we have made, if we're going to be honest and honor the men and women in uniform who serve every day, we have to ensure that every family, every child, and every person in every neighborhood of Chicago is safe. We need stronger state and federal laws to keep illegal guns off our streets and out of our communities. As someone who led the fight in Washington for the assault weapon ban and the Brady Bill under President Clinton, I promise never to stop working to achieve those important goals for the city, and I challenge Springfield and Washington to do more to protect the children of the city of Chicago and our neighborhoods. With this budget, we're also investing not just to make our neighborhoods safer but cleaner. For the last three years, we've been committed to managing our city services best based on the best practices, not politics. We found savings, efficiencies, and created a culture of accountability in our departments. But we put, but because we put progress ahead of politics, we've made a positive impact on the culture of our workforce, most of whom felt that politics had too large a role to play in the workplace. Take garbage pickup. For years, those routes were determined by political maps. We changed to a grid system like what UPS and FedEx use. It's more efficient. As a result, we are doing a better job, saving millions of dollars, and expanding recycling citywide without any new taxes. We are also investing in our neighborhoods to ensure that no community has to tolerate being overrun by graffiti or other blights. This includes an additional half million dollars over last year's budget to remove graffiti, adding 30 percent more crews for road and control, and adding almost $1 million for tree trimming and planting, allowing us to plant 7,800 trees this coming year. Now let me talk about last winter, as much as I think all of us would like to forget it. The record winter took a toll on our streets and reminded us that we need to continually invest in the quality of our roads. Despite patching a record number of potholes, we cannot patch our way to passable streets. Too often, our residents have to slow down to a snail's pace just because of all the potholes. We are completing a record year of paving. Going forward from now on, we will establish a new standard of paving a minimum of 300 miles a year throughout the city of Chicago. To make sure we're also ready for next winter, this budget will double the size of our pothole crews and go from paving or having them work half a year to year-round, also setting a new standard going forward. And nearly all the funding for this critical expansion will come from those who park at downtown garages or at our airports, including suburbanites and tourists and visitors to the city of Chicago. I want to thank all the residents and the city workers who stepped up last winter and showed the true spirit of the city of Chicago. But as we increase our resources for city services, we will continue to require and ask for a culture of service that goes with it. The taxpayers and the residents of the city of Chicago deserve nothing less. Our 2015 budget will help Chicago confront and overcome the greatest challenges to our future: the threat of crime, the quality of our education, and the need for economic growth and good jobs throughout the city. It will do so by continuing the practice of reforming city government, respecting our hard-working taxpayers, and most importantly, by continuing to confront the challenges facing our city and facing them head-on, not deferring them, not delaying them. With this budget, we will keep building a stronger foundation for the future. Today, I've given you a lot of facts. Here's the final one: the city of Chicago has the fastest-growing central business district in America. It's a feather in our cap, but it is only one yardstick to measure ourselves by. Our ultimate measure is whether every resident in every neighborhood participates in that progress. We cannot allow our politics in this chamber to stand in the way of that goal. From Roslyn to Rogers Park, from South Shore to Sawganash, from Austin to Albany, and from Woodlawn to Wildwood, we are all part of one great city. That great city, the city of Chicago, can only move forward together, leaving no neighborhood, no family, and no child behind. Members of the city council, I look forward to working with you, the people of the city of Chicago, toward our common goal of making Chicago the city that works for everyone. Thank you.